April 25th work session of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order. It's good to see everyone this morning. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chairman Nichol to lead the pledge and have the invocation.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Prue?
Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day on this earth to be stewards of your land. Lord, thank you for all the blessings that you give us each day. Lord, I ask you that you be with everybody across this earth who is suffering. And Lord, just lay your hands upon them and heal them in whatever ways you need. Lord, be with the first responders, law enforcement, military to protect our way of life and keep us safe. Lord, also be with this local board of commissioners here today. Lord, so we may do work that you see fit for the people of this county in your name, Mr. Prue.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. We're going to jump right into the agenda. First item is discussion on the library consolidation. Ms. McCauley and Mr. Trout.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before we get started on the most recent developments of the consolidation plan, I wanted to provide you with an update of our planned efforts. I'd like to introduce you to the draft agreement between Harnett County and the towns of Androcoast, Irwin and Dunn, and of course, answer any questions you may have in regards to the project or the agreement and ultimately, seek your guidance and approval for moving forward. So during our last discussion back in November, we reviewed the history of consolidation plans in detail and you received drafts of the municipal budgets. I gave you updated versions of those today as a refresher. We have made a few minor changes that slightly elevated the budget, but it was very small. But before giving you an update and just jumping right in, I thought it would be helpful to give you again, another snapshot of our current library system structure, why we're looking to consolidate the Harnett County library system, a brief history of our efforts to date, and a review of the funding formula. So county library systems in North Carolina consist typically, consists of a main branch or headquarters and is often located in the county seat. And smaller county-funded libraries located in towns, communities, and more densely populated areas of the service area, they often have smaller libraries than those, but they're usually all county-funded. But our library system here in Harnett County is just a little different. We are considered a county system by state library standards, but that's because of our close affiliation and support we have with the municipal libraries. Municipal library branches located in Androcoast, Irwin, Dunn, however, are primarily funded by their local municipal funds. We do provide a lot of backend support, substantial support to them. So what we do cover, what the county does cover for them is, I mean, excuse me, what the municipals cover for themselves is their own staffing. They pay for their books, collections, subscriptions, materials and supplies, programming, building and maintenance expenses, utilities and insurance. And the county, on the other hand, we provide all their public access computers, a print management system, circulation computers and peripherals, including receipt printers, barcode scanners. We provide their high-speed internet and Wi-Fi. We provide all technology support and we pay for all the expenses associated with North Carolina Cardinal Consortium, including their membership dues, their resource sharing, cataloging materials and courier services. So we have worked in tandem for years with them. So I guess the question is, if the system is working, you know, why are we looking to change it? Since consolidation discussions began in 2017, when the Harnett County Mayor's Committee presented Harnett County Board of Commissioners with a set of priorities, one of the priorities called for a single county-operated library system with the supposition that a united county operation will improve access to library services for all residents. And in July 2017, the library staff began conducting surveys, analyzing data and studying budgets in preparation for the creation of a new master plan. And during this process, we learned that insufficient library funding in some communities had a profound negative impact on hours of operation and the ability to provide quality resources and programs to those communities. So in 2018, the library master plan was adopted by the Harnett County Board of Commissioners and it did in fact recommend consolidating the county's branches into a unified system to create consistently exemplary patron experiences. In May of 2018, we brought the initial consolidation plan to the Board of Commissioners. The total cost to the county was around a million dollars per year, with the majority of that cost being personnel. And this plan included a phased-in funding formula in which each municipality would provide a contribution to the county ranging from their previous year's budget down to zero over the course of five years. The board direction at the time wanted each municipality to continue providing funding beyond that five-year period. We adjusted our proposal based on this direction. However, the municipalities were still concerned that residents in unincorporated areas would receive the benefits of library services without having to pay any additional taxes. And so consequently, we were just unable to resolve the issue with the municipalities and were ultimately unable to identify a solution that was appealing to both the Board of Commissioners and to the municipalities. So in the meantime, there was a change of Board of Commissioners. And in October of '21, Mr. Weatherspoon, you directed us to move forward on another attempt to create a consolidated library system. And the timing of that directive was actually perfect because we were already in plans of doing that. So since then, we have worked closely with the municipal leaders and library staff to identify and attempt to iron out any concerns or issues. We've refined each municipal library budget individually to identify any additional budgetary needs and revamped the initial phased-in funding formula to be carried out over three years instead of five. So today, we actually have a draft agreement crafted from Chris Appel and Thomas Sawyer that we want to present to you for review. It is a draft. I'm not sure if you have shared that with the, so it has been shared with the municipal leaders. But this document provides the financial property and operational appropriations, responsibilities and supervision of a consolidated Harnett County public library system. I feel like we've made a pretty good deal of progress and we feel that we have more momentum than we've had in the past and in our third attempt. And we, our goal here is to again, fully merge, strengthen and fortify our public libraries in Harnett County for the fairness of municipal taxpayers and for the overall good of our citizens. So at this time, I am fully prepared to answer any questions you may have about the consolidation. If you have questions specifically about the agreement, may have to defer to Mr. Trout or Chris.
Any questions for Ms. McCauley about this?
Yes, I do. It doesn't have anything to do with the agreement though. I just kind of wanted to know where we are at, like on the drawing board with getting something on the western side of the county, maybe a remote location. I mean, you have four municipalities that are like, you know, an offset from this main branch that we have, but on the other side of the river, there's absolutely nothing. So what's?
I have good news for you. So we are looking and have actually already started plans for moving into the old Ben Haven campus. We're going to have the old media center there. We're renovating it for it to be a library similar to what we have out at Boone Trail, but a little bit more substantial with more staffing, will be more library presence instead of solely or mainly Parks and Rec. So those plans are underway. We've already met with the shelving folks and furniture folks to come in and take a look and provide us with renderings of what we could do with that space. And I believe Chris Johnson is in right before starting actually the demolition of the inside to make that happen. So we're hoping, you know, a lot of that depends on being able to get those materials in because of shortages, but we're hoping to have something in place there, open and ready to go by sometime next year.
Outstanding.
Yeah, we have a couple of projects that we're currently working on, that Chris is working on. And once those are completed, he'll be able to shift some of his attention over there. We've got to get the parking lot completed first of all. But basically, the parking lot and the renovation of the old media center will be happening at the same time. So hopefully, when they're both, they'll both be completed approximately the same time within about three to four months.
Thank you. Has this agreement been shared with the municipalities?
I sent it to, on Friday, I sent it to each of the town managers. And a couple of them responded, they've received it, so I know it got to them. They obviously have not shared it with their respective bodies. That's something that comes next. So, but we felt that we wanted to show we've had this much progress to this point. We feel like it's a, Brian Haney had covered many of these points with them along the way. We think we're close to having something that will work. But obviously, they need to spend their time reviewing it. There may be a couple of weeks delay here as they work through having their review and get us back their feedback. Obviously, it would be best if we could make this decision prior to the budget going into effect. However, it has less of an impact on them because they actually pay less if we were to get this done by June 1st or July 1st. But for us, it's an opportunity still that we can make some adjustments related to the budget if necessary in order to be able to make this work. There are many operational steps that will need to occur once this is approved. So it's not something that's going to happen overnight once the decision is made. But hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll be back to see about getting this approved.
I was going to ask, do we have a timeline on, or a target date of trying to?
Yeah, I really would like to try and have this completed. We're a little behind as it relates to trying to get it done for the next fiscal year. But that would be my desired target time is if we can implement this at the beginning of the fiscal year. Couple of the things that are in the agreement are six-month notification timelines so that we would need to know by the 1st of January if they were wanting to end the agreement. That gives us each time to readjust our budgets as we go into the next year and begin to unwind the agreement. But I think with the way we have it set up, I think once individually, assuming they're agreeable, it'll be, I think, something that they'll enjoy having in place. And I think it'll improve service to all of Harnett County residents.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, and I guess this goes without saying, but I'm assuming that since we've reached this point in the process, that this is something the municipalities are interested in working out as well?
They are interested. They're not completely sold. I think they want to see what this agreement looks like and see if that works for them. And we have some that are a little more anxious than others and some that are just a little more skeptical. They wanted to see this first. And obviously, the way that our libraries are in Harnett County, you have two that are going to benefit in different ways than the other two. Two are going to benefit in ways that they're going to get a substantial amount of money, more than what they're getting, they're using now because their budgets are so small. So their services are going to increase. And then in your larger towns, specifically Androcoast and Dunn, they're already well-funded. So their benefits are not so much library services as it's a cost benefit for their towns. So they're just going to have to weigh out to see like what is important to them and if that's a good decision for them to make. I'm not 100% confident that they will all come on.
What happens, excuse me?
No, go ahead, Mr. Prue.
What happens if all of them don't come on?
If they don't come on, that's okay. We'll take on the ones that want to and then leave the door open for those who may want to just see how that works out with those who do and allow them to come in at another point.
I know this is something that we've been working on for a long time here, couple of years really. My other concern is we're working on the budget and all this got to fit into our budget, right, for this year?
Correct.
You don't see any problem with the budget and all of that?
We don't believe that it will be. We'll have to make adjustments, obviously. And over time, when we get to the third year of the process, they don't pay in. Each of the municipalities don't pay into having their library service. At that point, I see that, you know, that will make our budget tighter. We hope the revenues continue to grow and we'll be able to pay for that. But you know, that would be where I would say we are maybe in a tougher spot in three years when they're no longer contributing into the budget for the service. But we'll be preparing for that. That's the nice thing about the process as it relates to them paying a third less of what they currently use for their budget and then the next year paying a third less. what they currently use for their budget, and then the next year paying a third less, and then the third year paying none. We'll be implementing that into our budget over time, so it won't be a huge shock to our budget.
It'll be increased each year for each one of the municipalities. I think you've answered my question, something I've been wanting to see happen for a long time, but I want to make sure that we're going in the right direction as far as financing this. I don't want us to get in a position where we're going to have to back up as a finance. Even though I feel that our budget will increase, but anything can happen, you know, other things could offset that. So thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If, let's say, one of the municipalities says we don't want to be a part of this, will there be a change in the services that we provide to them?
That's a great question. No, we would keep them as, they're considered an affiliate library right now. We work together, and the services that I shared with you that we're doing now, we will continue in that exact same fashion. Nothing would change for them. We would continue to support them in the exact same way that we're supporting them now.
The only thing I will add to that, though, we talked about that if they joined in and then decided to leave, we might not provide those services at that point. They would need to, they'd be making the decision, I think, to go on their own.
I would assume that would be spelled out in the agreement?
It is.
How does this agreement, I know there was a draft agreement presented about five or six years ago from the Mayor's Association. How does this agreement differ from that? Or is it pretty much in line with what the...
I don't recall what was all in that agreement. It's been some time back, so I really can't make a...
Yeah, and I haven't reviewed that old agreement. I've been working on what was originally proposed, so I can't answer that.
And it may not have gotten to the library. Send it to the county manager and the chairman, because I know we had a meeting with them about it. It may not have gotten to the library.
There was a very, very rough draft. That was not done through our attorneys here, but through a consultant back five or six years ago, but it was in very rough stages. I can't imagine that that would have been presented. I could be wrong. I mean, if it was, I was not aware of it. And if it was a different agreement, I haven't read it.
This is Commissioner McCauley. I do remember something about that agreement. The only part that I remember about that agreement is that, you know, the board at that time was resistant to move forward simply because they felt that the municipalities had to come up with a way to provide some of the finances. At that time, it was a little bit too much of finance for the county. But now, since that time, we have moved forward, you know, and things are more in play to see this happen now than it was at that time. Is that correct, Angela?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. That is Harnett County Health Department's request for approval of pandemic recovery funding, federal ARPA funding.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We got General Assembly allocated some money for us in their budget this past year. We've just gotten it the last 10 days. It took that long to get it down to us. It's $206,000. It's for communicable disease and general sense. It can be for any communicable disease. What we will, it's only temporary money. It's this year and next year, so we're not looking at trying to create any positions. We will, we use it for contract staff. We can do some IT upgrades, that type thing, as long as it's in the communicable disease field. The one on aging is for $1,500, and that's came through the Medicare D or the CHIP program. And what we want to do with that is take that $1,500 and buy a new computer system. The one we have now, the screen on it, in all candor, is small, and it's hard for the clients when they come in to read the Medicare D plan that we're trying to show to them. So we want to buy one with a bigger screen for the $1,500. So we actually have two of these, one's for $206,000, that's for communicable disease, and then the other one's in aging, so $1,500.
Any questions for Mr. Roush, or any comments about this?
I have a comment. I know Mr. Roush and his department have received an award for the outstanding work that you all have done during this period of the virus. And I think that we, as the commissioners, should send to him and his department how much we appreciate the work that you all have done in this time, this epidemic. So I, I'm speaking, can I speak on behalf of the department, I mean, commissioners?
I think so, yes, ma'am.
I appreciate, and I think that you have done, your staff. I've been out there on several occasions talking to them, and they have the most generous way of communicating with you and all. So I appreciate, I appreciate the outstanding work that they are doing because sometime our employees need to be shown that we are appreciated, and I appreciate the work that you have done coordinating all this stuff across the county.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Commissioner McCauley, you and Commissioner Matthews, we're at the Rotary Club Gala, so we appreciate you being there, and we thank them for doing that for us, and that was nice of them. We did appreciate that.
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
The $200,000 allocation, is that a grant? There's not any matching funds involved?
No, there's not. Really what this was, we didn't, neither did the state, we didn't realize this was part of that ARPA money until January. And then the state had to get with the feds to find out what requirements they were going to put on the state to get the money distributed out. So that's why, we've only gotten this money the last 10 days. So in all candor, there's nothing I can do with this budget here. So we'll, you know, we'll have to get it, we have to budget it, and then we'll carry it forward in the next year and do those things with it.
If the board's in agreement, we will put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Okay?
Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Okay, Mr. Smith, you want to talk about your request for writing off some of these claims?
Yes, good morning. What I'm here about is this was a program that was created in the midst of COVID through the Federal Health and Human Services, through their HERSA branch. And what this did is it targeted the underinsured, and it assisted them with ensuring their hospital bills got paid, everything from the minute they called 911, also for our claims. All those claims through our billing company were loaded up into a federal portal, and then that's how they received payment for that. These last 88 claims are loaded into portal, and the actual program ran out of money on March 23rd. So what our billing company has requested of us is to have those actually zero balanced. That won't show any negative thing towards us. It'll also show no negative towards that actual individual when it comes to like credit ratings and things like that. So that'll assist those folks out there. That's pretty much it. Questions?
And what's the, what's the amount?
It's 88 claims, it's $81,928.
Any discussion from the board? Any comments? Here now, we will add this to the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Price, let's talk about the parking lot project at the old Benhaven School.
Okay, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Hope everybody's well. As you're well aware, Brian spent a lot of time, energy, and effort putting together the whole master plan. He spent a long time putting this together. What's in front of you this morning is the paving of the parking lot. The contract before you is with Barr Construction. It's 1.717 million for the paving of the Benhaven parking lot. And there's also another, the Timmins Group is actually the Professional Construction Administration Service. I know there's a threshold, and that's why we're before you on the 1.7 million for paving with Barr, but the Timmins Group would come in and oversee that, and there's a contract for 18,000 on that. I just wanted to make you aware. And Brian, I believe that's something that you can do as far as the county manager, so I just wanted to make you aware of those two. So this is just moving forward with the master plan of what we have out front there. You heard Angela talk about the library. We're excited about that opportunity. The gym is in excellent shape. I think you've seen that, Commissioner Matthews. And so this is just the construction for Barr Construction to award the bid at 1.7 for the paving.
All right, any questions or comments from Price? What's the feeling of the board on this?
I'm just putting it on the consent agenda. We had discussed this previously, I believe, and had good recommendations on this company.
You did.
Came highly recommended, so I don't have any reservations on it.
Everyone in agreement with that? Put it on the consent agenda for approval?
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
I guess you're still up, talk about the RFQ for the fuel provider.
Okay, so there was a second RFP sent out a few weeks ago. So we actually, the committee that was formed at the jet port wanted to kind of hone in a little bit more on the price per gallon, which we all thought was a very good idea. We did send that out. We got three more bids back in. They were very, very close. I think it's in your packet as far as AvGad price per gallon and Jet A price per gallon. So let me kind of go through that a touch and tell you what the committee that was formed in order to make a recommendation to the airport committee, which met last Monday. So as you see, I think you've got this in your packet, the price per gallon with Titan, Campbell, and Epic fuels. The small committee that was formed to report to the jet port full committee had looked at these in great detail, and I really appreciate those folks getting together and going through these with a fine-tooth comb. So here's the recommendation that they gave to the airport committee. They were looking at Titan Aviation Fuels to award this bid for the following reasons. One, the low bidder, when factoring an upfront $30,000 incentive that would come at one pop, the rental of a 3,000-gallon Jet A truck, and a 1,200-gallon AvGas truck at no charge to the county, complimentary uniforms, which we were going to do that in the budget anyway, so this particular company would do complimentary uniforms, complimentary fuel filters, and the lowest credit card processing fee of all proposals received. So when you factor all that into the price per gallon, this committee felt that this was the best option for the county to move forward at Harnett Regional Jet Port. And Chairman, you were on that committee. If there's any other thoughts, ideas you'd like to share?
The only thing is the filters. That's a one-time, and they will provide them free of charge one time, and then after that, we have to buy.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. That's correct.
And they also, they also providing some hoses?
Hose, those nozzles were at a cheaper rate as far as what they were looking at. So what has happened is there was a subcommittee that was formed and went through this, and then the airport committee met last Monday, April 18th. And it was brought before them, and we spent a lot of time discussing this, and the recommendation of the subcommittee as well as the airport committee to the Board of Commissioners was to go with Titan for the reasons I just mentioned.
And if anybody wants to see the bids, I have them right here.
The only question I have is the filters. I know they said they're going to provide it free for a period of time, that's one time, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, did they give you a cost form moving forward?
After that one time, I do not recall. Chairman, do you know that? After the cost of the filter, after they do the first one free?
Natalie said that she, with her ordering them, that they cost a couple hundred bucks per, and she was just three...
That's right. She did say...
They're about $200 each.
But it was in line with what she's been doing?
Yeah.
Good question. It's a few hundred bucks.
And I just want to know, is it in line with the budget for it?
Yes, ma'am, we were comfortable with that, yes. It was nothing astronomical as far as, yes.
And that $30,000, like, can be used as the incentive that we're getting for, you know, other hoses, lines, filters, and other things, maintenance items as well.
And if I recall...
That $30,000 is for operation expenses.
Okay. And that was an upfront the first year, if I recall correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The other ones, one with, I think Epic was 10 only, Campbell was 50, but it was over a five-year period.
Yeah, they wanted to do 10,000 over five years.
That's right, and Titan was 30 upfront.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate the committee's hard work on that. They did a good job researching this, and that's the recommendation that's in front of you.
If the board is in favor of accepting this recommendation, we will add it to the consent agenda.
Do it.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk, please add that to the consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. All right, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chair. The only thing I have is you have in your packet a couple of applications for boards. Please review those. If there are any concerns or questions, please let us know. We'll be taking those at the next meeting for approval. Otherwise, just very continuing to make progress with relates to the budget, and we'll have that budget presentation on the 16th. We'll be in touch with you prior to that about coming in and doing a detailed review of it in small groups so that we're ready when the presentation's made, that you've been able to get a preliminary look at it. Then we'll have a work session and then approval, which relates to the approval of the budget. So I think that's it.
We also have a recommendation or a request to remove one person from the library committee on participation?
Yes, that's correct.
We have a request to be approved, so we'll do that next...
And that's in a large... Okay. I'll talk to Mr. Johnson in agreement with the vacancy on the planning board. That's his district.
I noticed that lady. I noticed that.
All right.
Who teach you?
All right. Anything on the agenda for next time that you'd like to discuss at this time? Item 11, we just put that on the consent agenda. We're going to have Reed Williams, who is president of I-4095 Crossroads in America Economic Development Alliance. He's going to do a presentation. Is there anything else to come before the board today? If not, I will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make motion to adjourn.
Have a motion at second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're adjourned.